All right, well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 4th, 2022, Meeting of the Planning Board. Our first order of business is to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from December 2nd, 2021, and minutes from January 6th, 2022. Any questions or comments relative to the minutes? Not seeing anything. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the two sets of minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain from the December minutes as I was not present.
Okay. So duly noted, Emily. Thank you. Next item of business is to sign for some bills. We have bills here. First one is Graves Engineering for 56 to 66 South Consignman Avenue.
Excuse me. One second, excuse me. It says I was absent on December minutes too, so sorry. I just noted.
Okay, very good. So can you note, Mr. Rao is not present for that one. Thank you.
They were great though.
Other than that.
Okay, so our bills, first one is for Graves Engineering for 56 to 66 South Consignman Avenue for soil testing for the amount of $315.85. Another one, Graves Engineering, 195 Main Street Soil Testing for $315.85. McMahon Associates, 1 Greenbrier Drive Traffic Review, $879.45. McMahon Associates, 1 Greenbrier Drive Traffic Review, $970 for a total of $2,481.15. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the expenditures as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, that's been going around. Board member comments. Mr. Rao, welcome back.
No comments, sir. No comments yet.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Rotelakis?
No comments this month, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thomas?
No comments this month, sir.
I have no comments either. Mr. Cahill, do you have any?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our first hearing is a new public meeting for a proposed open air canopy request for a de minimis change. WD Centec Park LLC. Location is 15 Fortune Boulevard. If you're present, please introduce yourself.
Sure. David Kelly, Meridian Associates. We were here before you about a year or so ago for the expansion of the EverSource Training Facility up at the end of Fortune Boulevard. And at this point, they have a, an area that they use for training where they practice installing piping and other sorts of activities. And they just want to simply put a canopy over the top of it to shelter them during some inclement weather when it occurs. There's no change to the functionality of the site. There's no, no other changes. There was a comment regarding the lighting and the stormwater for this. The lighting is all located underneath the canopy and would only be on during hours of operation. I provided a photometric plan with my response back at late this afternoon. As far as the stormwater, I provided additional calculations that showed that the increased impervious area of the canopy roof, when that runoff lands on the pavement, enters the drainage system, and goes down to the existing stormwater infiltration system in the south corner, does not affect that in any negative way. The post-development peak rates of runoff are not increased versus what was previously proposed. So with that all said, I don't feel so there's any impacts to this proposal.
Very good. Thank you. Board member comments. Mr. Rao, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Jerry?
I have none.
Mr. Rotelakis?
I'm all set.
Mr. Thomas?
No questions.
No, I see that the comments that were brought up by the town seem to have been addressed relative to the lighting and stormwater management.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interject. It came really late, but the town engineer did have a chance to review it and got back to me in an email. He can send a more formal response if he want, but said he was fine with the response and had no further issues.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, although we don't normally have public comment for de minimis change request, it was brought to our attention, we should probably entertain doing that. So I'm going to, you can stay there, it's okay. I'm just gonna ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter. Not seeing any. I guess I'll leave it to the board's discretion. Do we feel this is something that falls under de minimis?
Yeah, I would say that we make a finding that this change of the canopy is in fact a de minimis change.
Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to that?
No questions.
So we'll, we don't have to close the public meeting, do we? We probably do, right before?
Yeah.
Why don't we have a motion to close the public meeting for 15 Fortune Boulevard?
I move that we close the public meeting for 15 Fortune Boulevard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so.
I make a motion that we determine the change relative to the canopy is de minimis and also approve the change as shown on the plans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next item of business is for Falcon Farms. I'm gonna take this a little bit out of order. I'm gonna do the inclusionary special permit first, if that's okay with you, Mr. Rashid? Mr. Rashid, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Mr. Rashid?
Whatever you like, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So why don't we take the special permit continued public hearing? This is for Falcon Farms, nine lot subdivision, special permit, inclusionary housing fee in lieu, seven Cheryl Relti Trust. Location is 581, 583, and 587 South Street.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So you wanna talk about the inclusionary first?
We're gonna talk the inclusionary thing first, yeah.
Yes, sir. So I think there was a confusion on the numberings and we clarified since then. So, you know, we are willing to, again, there could be a long debate on, you know, how many in numbers and years and this and that, but, you know, we are willing to go with the application we have submitted humbly and will like to pay fee in lieu.
Okay.
So just to clarify, we had that discussion, I brought it up, so I might as well resolve it last time, was, there was just some discussions about the lot numbering. We did do some research. We looked back with Andy Truman, Town Engineer, to discover that the applicant had indeed submitted an A&R Plan to separate that one lot, the, well, forgetting what it was called.
603.
603R for rear. The confusion stemmed from the fact that the existing conditions sheet did not show it as carved out, having been A&R'd previously to the submission, hence the confusion, because we thought it was stemming, that subdivision was stemming from this subdivision plan. It had already existed. So I have a note to the applicant's engineer, just on the final plans to make that correction on the existing condition sheet, so it's much clearer. So we do have nine lots. It's nine lots, it's one inclusionary required, 10%, rounded up to the highest whole number is one.
Yep.
So.
Any questions or comments from the board relative to this request? Mr. Rao?
No questions, Chair.
Mr. Jerry?
I have no questions.
Mr. Rotelakis?
No, I have no question.
The only, I'm trying to find a communication I had, so I'm gonna go to Mr. Thomas next.
I have no questions.
Okay. I know I had it here. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, what communication are you looking for?
Oh, there we go. So just so you're aware, we received a recommendation from the Shrewsbury, I'm sorry, I gotta find the words now, from the Planning and Economic Development Department. They had a hearing and based on where we are relative to affordable housing in town, their recommendation is that the planning board not approve payment in lieu for any upcoming projects to help build our internal inventory. So based on this particular feedback, which aligns, if you've known through many hearings I have, I am certainly one that is not necessarily in favor of fee in lieu. I personally am still, I would like to follow the recommendation of the planning in the Economic Development Department.
Mr. Chairman, that's the Affordable Housing Trust.
I'm sorry, the Affordable Housing Trust, my apologies. So that, for me, that's where I stand. So with that, do we have any questions or comments?
My only comment is I think the ones that we did approve for payment of fee in lieu recently were over 55s where, and the issue was that the DHCD was not recognizing the affordable units in an over 55 project to the count, to the town's count of affordable housing stock. So it was felt that the town would be better served by accepting the money.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, certainly.
So, Mr. Chair, if you recognize that this has been going on for over two years now, we actually first applied two years ago in May, April, May, so it's a little more than two years going, yes, we, you know, we took the application back because it took so long in the conservation and then we reapplied, but it took a longer period. Secondly, I didn't wanna go into this debate, but reality is that if we really, you know, go in the debate, reality is I'm not taking one lot and making nine lots. I actually have, you know, several lots included in there and there is a debate that how many net lots I'm actually making. So, I mean, I could go in that debate, but that would of course be a longer debate and I would have to really, you know, present this to my attorney and go back and forth. So the simplest thing was to basically, okay, pay fee in lieu, and there was a lot of precedent, especially on South Street from the previous, you know, seller. He actually also paid one inclusionary and I have all that documentation which I can share. So I didn't wanna go into all that detail and I thought the easier thing would be, otherwise it'll go back and forth so many times between the town attorney and my attorney. So I thought the simplest thing would be to accept the fee in lieu and move on, because that whole neighborhood is really looking for a closure and, you know, looking for a nice neighborhood and doing that. So I would appreciate that we continue with, especially the fact this has been going on for so long, the fact that the previous owner actually did pay and he shared that information with me at that time. And the fact is, I have multiple lots going in, and if I go in that detail, you know, there may not be, again, there may not be any inclusionary at all if I go in that detail. And I appreciate your bringing this before we bring the other discussion. I understand the rationale now, but I would appreciate that if we stick with that, because I kinda, you know, the way I designed this whole thing is that, okay, we put that in a budget total cost and we're doing that in that, in that, in that point. I know this is a new thinking, that was another thinking when I originally applied. Had we made this decision, you know, a year ago, and there are many things happening in the conservation and whatnot, and, you know, the color being wrong and color was approved, color was not, anyway. So I would appreciate that if we, if we close with the request I made because of the fact it's an ongoing concern for so long.
Okay. I understand what you're, what you're saying.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, Mr. DiPaolo?
Good evening, Morris DiPaolo. I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm the Board of Selectments representative. I had hoped our chair would be here by now, but he's coming out of Boston and obviously he hasn't made it yet. You know, we formed the trust about 18 years ago and, as you know, we've gotten about two or three actual affordable housing units built through the process. Just about everything else has been through the payment in lieu. And we have accumulated a million dollars over 18 years, but I'm sure you know that 18 million, I mean, 18 million, who wish, a million dollars to try to build housing in Shrewsbury is not a lot of money. And the trust has finally been active since town meeting a year ago. And it's our opinion that we would like to see every unit, project that qualifies to have to have an affordable unit built, build it, because we're not making progress in terms of affordable housing. I don't know the history of this project, but I do know that we're certainly not keeping up with affordable housing. Apartments do, because they have to, but in terms of freestanding housing, it's not happening. And so the trust took a vote. That's the position that we're gonna be taking going forward and we'd like you to consider that. It is the preferred method in the bylaw and I know that we've, over the years, have deferred the other way, but we didn't have an active trust up until a year ago. So we respectfully ask that you do require that the unit be built.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that's which should be heard?
Rashid, just so I understand you, are you saying that the prior owner paid a?
Inclusionary.
Fee in lieu for this?
So.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may interject, so it is the position of the Planning Department that one inclusionary is due, is required for this project. So if the board renders a decision that the applicant disagrees with, he has the rights to appeal that decision, if that's the case. But we stand by that one is due.
But there was, was this, was this site the subject?
So it was, however, after two years, it expires, right? So two years, slate gets wiped clean. Any further subdivision is part of that.
Okay.
Is new. Two years expired after that. This is a new subdivision.
But that was a bunch of A&R lots, too.
Correct. Didn't matter. It doesn't matter how you cut them up, but it was two years.
It's like 13 lots. I remember it was a huge.
Yeah, that was this exact day, six years ago, my first meeting.
Yeah, all right.
If you must know.
But this was part, but this was a portion of that?
This is a remainder of that. Two years expired, though.
But it wasn't the entirety of the site?
No, there are other lots.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from the board? No. Okay. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
So I have, I have two question comments. I know you like to close it. Number one, if I understood that there is a bylaw that if you build, you could also build a duplex lot and we discussed that with the town planner. Unfortunately, there's a lot of confusion because nothing is done on that. But my understanding, I read this a few times, and my understanding is that you could build, you know, two townhouses and they will look like the houses built. However, you could, you will give one an inclusionary and one, you know, you would of course sell it. And that's, that's another route I understood there is.
Correct. Go look at Grove Meadow subdivision on, over off of Lake Street, near the intersection of Lake and Grove. You'll see that house right across from Grove Street. Looks like a single family, but it's a duplex. It's one Mr. Munce built.
And both of those, Mr. Vice Chairman, are in fact affordable units.
Both.
It's not one. So I have, this is a letter from June of 2021. It's a footnote, so it's a little hard to find. It was a footnote that basically states if it comes out to an odd number, in this case, one, you can round that up to two and put both affordable units in a house that looks like a single family house, in essence. It would require a special permit to do that. I believe it was like a double special permit, because it's over, it's over 20% of all the total units on the lot, but they could do it under this footnote. So the applicant were the board to deny the special permit for a fee in lieu, and the applicant were to come back in with a new special permit, could actually do a duplex that looked like a single family, but both units would have to be affordable.
Mr. Chair, I beg to disagree on that because Mr., but Mr. Cahill and I had a discussion about that. He was not very clear about that and I read that bylaw as well. That really negate the, the, the strategy behind this whole thing, building the duplex is because, and secondly, when you, also it says in the bylaws, if I remember, I don't have it in front of me because I didn't know this was coming in this way, because all the discussion we had in the past was, you know, let's do fee in lieu and that's easy and let's get done with it. But anyway, the, my understanding there's another is that basically if you're adding a unit, then total number is, you know, increased by a unit. That's very conclusion, it's not clear. However, if you talk about even an odd, this nine lot subdivision, that makes really, you know, 10, and if you count it that way, so then the whole philosophy of doing this duplex is that you could go give one for inclusionary and sell one. I really don't see anywhere unclear where he says both have to be, we were not clear about that when we talked about it. And it was so complicated that finally, you know, Mr. Cahill and I decided it's easier, just let's get done with the fee. That was the end. Mutually.
I never made a decision.
No, you don't make a decision.
The applicant had a choice and that the applicant could apply for a special permit if that's what he wished.
Yeah, I don't ever remember having that conversation either.
Right.
I don't endorse either way, I just explained.
Absolutely don't endorse it, but this was our discussion, because you guys decide about inclusion, not inclusionary. So the whole idea, because this goes behind the essence of this whole duplex thing. The whole idea of duplex is that you give one for inclusionary and sell one. Please go ahead and read it if you wanna read that, because it's not clear anyway.
Well, I think we can entertain that if you decide to go for a special permit to do the duplex, get into, get into that avenue of investigation, right? I don't know that we need to have that figured out here today, right?
Fair enough. That's fair enough. So do we then continue that discussion and go with the other application for the subdivision? Because this really standalone, you know, application for the?
Well, this wouldn't affect the subdivision decision, though.
Correct. So what I'm saying is that should we table this or you wanna vote on, close and vote on this?
I think we're gonna close and vote on this and then we'll open, reopen the subdivision hearing.
Okay, no, but then I would have to apply again for the, for the special permit and that's where that discussion comes in?
So should the board decide to deny the fee in lieu?
Mm-hmm.
That would be the decision.
Okay.
At that point, you'll be required to have a, an affordable unit. You have an option, it looks like, that you've investigated, that has a certain set of parameters that you need to follow through on, and that's what you would need to do. I don't think that that impacts the entire other hearing that you have, because that's just the subdivision itself. Am I correct at that?
Yeah, it's not gonna hold up.
Okay.
If you're unhappy with your result, it's, and you get your subdivision approval, we proceed with construction, Rashid.
Fair enough.
So it's, I know it's the chicken and egg kind of thing in your mind, but it, in my view, it's not.
I just wanted to ask the clarity.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And I just wanna make it also clear.
And, you know, the timing is everything, Rashid, and I apologize that you happen to be the first one that we got the letter from.
The thing is, this subdivision is having every single thing you can think of. But anyway, I do wanna make it very clear, Mr. Cahill is very professional and every single time I talk to him about a device, he very clarified, you know, openly that I can't make a decision, but there's discussions I'm talking about. He did not give me a decision.
Okay. I understand.
I got it.
Okay. With that, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing on the Falcon Farms nine lot subdivision, special permit, inclusionary housing fee in lieu.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's deliberate on that. So as I mentioned, my, my position is really unchanged over the years and it's just fortified with the additional support from another section of our community, so I plan on voting against this.
You know, I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the applicant, especially given that he succeeded to someone who did pay a portion of the fee in lieu, but again, as pointed out by Mr. Cahill, that was two years ago and nothing occurred on that special permit. And the special permit expired. So.
It's, I'm sorry to clarify, so it's additional, so the person who would have actually owed more at the time would have been the person who originally subdivided that land.
Right.
So if they had kept subdividing within a two-year period, it stopped, right? Nothing happened. Two years expired, not the special permit, just wanna be clear. Two years passed.
Without any further.
And then additional subdivisions, now, here we are, six years later, and more subdivision of the land is taking place, so that is now brand new subdivision land.
Correct.
I just, it is confusing. I'm not a huge fan of the way it was organized.
To be frank, I thought it was one across the street that Mrs. Zaretti might have owned at one time.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yep.
But kinda sympathetic, because I guess some of the money was paid, but again, the rules are the rules and I know the town does need affordable housing, so I am not in favor of this request.
Mr. Jerry?
Yeah, I, again, I'm sympathetic to how long you've been here in front of us and I don't think it's entirely all your fault, but we all sort of bear some responsibility for that, I think. So I'm not sure that's really a factor in this decision and I think, given the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm inclined to deny as well.
Mr. Rao?
Yeah. I agree with my board members that, yes, I sympathize with the applicant. He has been through a long process and this decision came through relatively recently. I wish the planning board kind of made a decision much before, you know, in which case it would have been a different decision, but we really sympathize with the applicant. But I support the board's decision to go with the, not go with the payment in lieu at this stage.
Mr. Thomas?
Same as everyone else.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of the fee in lieu. I think it's time that we have to start making people build these units. You've been talking about it for a long time and, you know, now we have the trust and the new board and stuff, so I wouldn't be in favor of either, unfortunately.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that we deny the applicant's request to pay a fee in lieu of providing the affordable unit.
So, do we do that or do we do?
You poll us?
Poll us for approve or deny, I think.
But I set it up, so now you can ask us.
Okay. So I will poll the board in favor of denying?
Again.
What's that?
Deny the special permit.
In favor of denying the special permit or for the special permit?
Favor.
In favor of denying?
Deny the special permit.
Mr. Jerry, Mr. Rotelakis?
Deny the special permit.
Deny the special permit.
And I also vote to deny the special permit as well. Again, with the sympathy of, I understand, Mr. Rashid, it's been a long road for you on this, but.
You'll still be okay, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I do have one clarification question. I know it's closed, but I don't know if the clarification question I can ask now or not.
I'd rather move on to the next hearing.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Our next hearing is a continued public hearing for Falcon Farms nine lot subdivision, definitive subdivision, nine Cheryl Trust, Relti Trust. Location is 581, 583, and 587 South Street. I guess we're pretty much here. Any additional updates that you have for us at this time?
Not much. I think there were two confusions last time. One was really regarding the numbers and we clarified that, which Mr. Cahill has already explained and rather than muddy the waters.
Yep.
And the second really thing is the, you know, this whole wall engineering review. Honestly, we are used to Graves. I know they don't do this review, but they provide a very detailed narrative and it's a 20-point narrative or whatever, and we give them the answer and change the plan and we're done with it. Unfortunately, in here, you know, we're getting things in piecemeals. I never dealt with GZA before, but now this is my second time I'm dealing with them on the same, you know, it was previous design, there was a different design and I had a different engineer. He went through the two, three reviews and he got really frustrated. This time, you know, they asked first time, the way they ask question is they don't give narrative, they just mock up the plan we submitted. And we gave the answer, then it took, you know, almost six weeks and then when we gave all that and the meeting, the day I came last meeting, we provided the second answer and it just got the, now asking more questions and we basically answered now those. So honestly, we believe that there are not no substantial, you know, any structural question, there are more clarification questions. So I believe we have done a pretty good design, we have done two reviews and, you know, more review goes by and more money I pay, because it's go-by review. So I would say at this point, honestly, we're ready to close this hearing. I request to close this hearing. And if the town engineer needs any more support or clarification, we'll be happy to provide.
Mr. Cahill, do you agree that the planning, the engineering department is somewhat satisfied with the design review?
Yeah, I concur with the applicant that, and planning also agrees with engineering that we believe that what remains from the peer reviewer, GZA, is mostly clarification informational type questions at this point. I know the board was pretty greatly concerned about this being a public street one day. So, but we believe that and recommend that the board go forward with a vote tonight. And perhaps, I've drafted a condition you can see we can discuss later during deliberations. Simply that those clarifying questions be answered to the satisfaction of the board's peer reviewer and town engineering before any building permits are issued. So, but it would allow this process to keep moving forward and those, pretty confident will be wrapped up in a week or two anyway. So at this point, to reiterate, DPW Engineering and Planning endorse, or recommend, I should say, moving forward tonight with the decision.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody on the board with any questions or comments? Mr. Rao?
No questions, Mike.
Mr. Jerry?
I have no further questions.
Mr. Rotelakis?
I'm just glad that we've gotten resolution from the structural engineer as to the, to the structure. So that we know that, you know, as designed and assuming presumably is built, one day when the town accepts the road, everything will be okay.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
No further questions.
And I have no further questions either. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the Falcon Farms definitive subdivision plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so everyone should have a draft decision in front of them. There are a couple of waiver requirements, requests in this. The first one is to not provide an application fee. And I believe we've had discussion about that at the prior hearing that we would be in favor of that. So I guess maybe what we should do is go through the waivers first and poll the board for either in favor or not in favor. So as far as the application fee waiver request, Mr. Rao, how do you, how do you vote?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Jerry?
For the waiver request for not to provide an application fee, do you, are you for or against that waiver?
I don't think I have that.
Oh, we were discussing having him pay one half of the application fee. Is that not accurate?
What was...
Correct. Thank you for remembering that, Mr. Jerry. Yeah, so there was a discussion earlier and I believe there was, if you will, a handshake agreement made at the beginning of this process that the board approved 50% of the application and Planning Department recommended that.
Okay, does that need to be written down inside?
It is written down here on your draft.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Page three at the top, very first line.
Oh, one half of the required. Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Just because of the process he went through.
Because of the earlier meetings.
Yeah, yeah. I'm in support of that, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Jerry?
I'm in favor of that. Thank you for that reminder.
Mr. Rotelakis?
I'm in favor of the waiver of half the fee.
And Mr. Thomas?
I am in favor.
And I am in favor of that one as well. The second request is for, to not provide project review fee. Whereas this did require a review and you've been pretty much following along through that. I don't think that that waiver needs to be approved, so personally I'm going to vote against it. So, Mr. Rao, your choice?
Yeah, I'll be against it too.
I would vote to deny that.
Yeah, I don't see any justification for that.
Mr. Thomas?
I would deny that.
Okay. Final waiver request is to reduce the width of the grass plot from six feet to three and a half feet only at the culvert crossing and to provide a sidewalk on only one side of the subway, subdivision roadway. No, that was a lot of conversations around that in the earlier meetings. I felt that we came up with a pretty decent plan for that, so, Mr. Rao, how would you like to...
I'm in favor of that, Mr. Chairman.
In favor.
Mr. Rotelakis? Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And I am in favor of that as well. Okay, now we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled, "Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Falcon Farms Definitive Subdivision, Inclusive of Our Decision on the Three Waivers Just Discussed."
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so you're all settled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing where Mr. Thomas will be recusing himself. This is for a proposed four-unit multifamily development site plan approval and special permit. Lakeway Realty LLC. Location 56 to 66 South Quincyman Avenue. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Mr. Shay.
Please introduce yourselves.
For the record, my name is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with law offices on 11 Maple Avenue. And I'm here with Tom Pacut, who is the principal of the entity that is, has applied for these permits. Tom is to my right and also we have John Grunier, who is the engineer on my left. As you will recall from the last hearing, or the beginning of this hearing, we had a couple of issues to resolve. One was whether to put a handicap parking space in. We resolved that because we were putting the additional visitor parking space in, we came up to 15 parking spaces and under the CMRs, then we had to put in a handicap space. So that's been resolved and we have added that to the plan. The other question was whether there needed to be a separate turnaround spot for, say, Amazon vehicles or anything else. And we would suggest to you respectfully that that should not be required because we've added the additional visitor parking spaces. We think that is adequate for this type of development, which is relatively modest, I would suggest. I think that's the only issues that we had. I understand Graves this afternoon responded. I think we've addressed all of those issues.
I saw that too. Did you want to say anything else, Mr. Grunier?
I think you said enough.
Sorry about that. I jumped in.
Quite all right.
It's going good. I'm going to keep on my own.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Rao?
I don't have any questions.
Just for your information, Mr. Rao has Mullins Dan on all of the meetings.
And I've signed off.
Was absent from last month, so just...
And I've signed off.
Okay, oh, thank you. All right, no questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Jerry?
I have none. Glad to see the additional spaces and I think this is a enormous improvement to this property.
Mr. Rotelakis?
No, I'm, I'm fine with this. My only question is, in the decision that we have, it says no waivers. Do you need to request a waiver for the issue of the turnaround or is that just a recommendation on site plan?
No, there's...
There's no requirement, right?
There's not a requirement. That was just a suggestion.
Just, okay, for the site plan review?
Correct.
So that would be, yes, okay, that would be, that would be a condition that we could impose, but no...
Right.
Okay, great, okay.
We're obviously asking you not to.
No, I get it. I get it.
He's the rules guy. Got to follow what he goes with.
Good, good, good. Fine, here it is.
Okay, I have no questions or comments either. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any hands. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing relative to the application for site plan approval and special permit for 56 through 66 South Quincyman Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you do have a draft decision in front of you. There are no waiver requests. It's pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the draft decision? Mr. Rao?
No questions, Chairman.
Mr. Jerry?
I have none.
Mr. Rotelakis?
No questions.
I have no questions either. Entertain a motion.
I think you got to poll us. But I'll, I move that we authorize the acting clerk to execute the decision entitled, "Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, 56 through 66 South Quincyman Avenue, Lakeway Realty LLC."
Mr. Rao, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Rotelakis?
In favor.
Mr. Boule is in favor as well. You guys are all settled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Our next hearing is a continued public hearing for One Greenbrier Road, Over 55 Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit. Cypress Department, I'm sorry, Cypress Avenue Development LLC. Location is One Greenbrier Road and 169 R Gulf Street. Mr. Grunier?
And I'm here with Mr. Steve Blum, who is the applicant for the project. The purpose of this meeting is to kind of give you an update as to where things stand and give you some good news. We have had some modifications based on comments from the Conservation Commission. And the biggest change that we have made, and we presented this...
Sorry.
It's okay.
One second. A minor glitch going on over here.
It's all right.
I have to reprint that.
Okay. No worries.
I misread the, what I was saying. My apologies. Sorry, Mr. Grunier.
That's okay. So we presented this modification to the Conservation Commission at their, at their last public hearing. And what we have done, and I think this will go a long way to satisfying Conservation Commission's as well as your board. What we have done is, you know that we were looking to include 12 units in the northeast lee portion of the property. North is towards me. So what we have proposed to the Conservation Commission and now to you folks is to not develop this northeastern lee portions, about five acres. The benefit to that is it, we don't need to have a wetland crossing to go access this, to access this portion of the property. It does reduce the amount of, obviously, site disturbance, does reduce, reduce some site cost, reduces the amount of impervious area. And it does reduce the total unit count by 10%. So we are reducing the total unit number by 10% of the entire project. So what we are doing is concentrating the development within the southwestern lee corner of the property, which is really the main development portion of the property. We will have one detention basin located in this area that will capture and treat all runoff from, from development. And in addition to that, it may be hard to see, but we did discuss with the, with the deputy fire chief what we should do to provide a double barrel access off of what will be the new cul-de-sac for Greenbrier Drive. So what we are doing is, the regulation from conversation with the deputy fire chief is you cannot have an island or a double barrel in front of fire hydrants or in front of units. So we do have fire hydrants because it is, it's a straight long run. We do have a fire hydrant in this area, so we are providing for about half the distance or maybe not quite half the distance to, to access the first unit. We are providing a double barrel entryway and that would have a center island and we'd have a break in between. So if there was the need to get around for an emergency vehicle, they can cut through and get around through. So we had a good discussion with the deputy fire chief in order to provide that. So that the balance of this access drive will be 24 feet and then for the loop it'll be 22 feet, I believe. So as in our original proposal, we still will have a clubhouse that'll be located in this area. We are providing overflow parking spaces through, around the loop. So we do have adequate overflow and visitor parking spaces. So since our meeting, and I think that went a long way with the Conservation Commission, that addressed a lot of their concerns. We're in the process of, with subdivision and site plans, you change one thing, everything changes. So we're redoing all of our roadway drainage layouts, profiles, recalculating all the drainage. And we are pretty far along in that right now. We'll probably have it done in the next week or so. So, and we will be submitting those updated plans so that those can get reviewed by, by staff and by engineering. So we just really want to give you an update as to the direction we're going. We're thinking that we got a lot of, I think, smiling faces with Conservation at our last hearing. And we think that this would also go a long way in as far as density and the amount of roadway would hopefully address some of your concerns as well. So like I said, just, just an update. If you have any questions, we'd love to answer them. But we will be, probably in the next couple of weeks, be providing full engineered plans for all these revisions.
Okay. Mr. Rao, any questions or comments?
A general question, like you said, you decreased the number of units by 10%. Have you increased the density in other areas or is it the same density like previous plans?
So we, there were total, in the, in the northeast lee, five acres, we had 12 units.
Yeah.
And so we were able to maintain all of our setbacks and maintain, you know, enough road frontage and drainage. So we did get six back from that. So net-net's a reduction of six units. So there were 66 units, now we're down to 60 units. And we did maintain a clubhouse.
Mr. Jerry?
Yeah, was my only question is how many units were you shifting over? You answered that. Thank you.
Mr. Rotelakis?
I just look forward to seeing the new plan.
Mr. Thomas?
Is this sheet and the next sheet the same thing? From here, it's so hard to tell. It's like so far...
Yes, it was.
It looks like two totally different plans for me, to me, from here.
We did, this is the plan we presented to Conservation. So the layout, this shows the double barrel. That's really, I just didn't have all of the rating and color. Same layout. I just didn't have the double barrel on there and I want real to show you that.
Because I don't see like the clubhouse and stuff on that second page like you have on the first page.
Yeah, clubhouse is right there. So clubhouse is going to be right there.
You may be looking at the detention.
I don't know. It's like it's so far away from me here, I can't tell if there's...
Now, so at the end of the day, yeah, we're maintaining a clubhouse. Clubhouse is going to be on the right-hand side next to, this is the septic area. Clubhouse is going to be right there. And again, the point is we're not developing that and we're going to do a double barrel, I think, at the end.
When you're selling the units, you might not want to say, oh, the clubhouse is next to the septic area.
No, no. But you know what? It gives a nice big open green area, so. Good place for bocce.
That was my only question for now. I guess we're just waiting on...
I don't have any questions specific to this because obviously we don't have anything in front of us. I did review the Conservation Commission's meeting. I do know there's still some questions about flood plains and things of that nature. I'm sure you're still addressing.
We are.
So I just wanted to just be clear that this board, as long as I'm sitting in the chair that I'm sitting in, we're not going to make any decision until Conservation is completely closed.
Got you.
Not conditioning or anything like that, just your understanding of that.
Yeah, no, we, we know the rules.
Okay. Second thing is, I did have an opportunity because not, we didn't have, actually have a meeting last meeting. It was a prior month. I had brought up a concern about the length of the two-to-one, 800-foot-long retaining wall, right?
Yes.
That the slope analysis, well, GZA actually looks like that they, they have similar concerns that I did. So have you had an opportunity to review the GZA concerns relative to the boring logs required? Their concerns about the real in-depth cuts that are going to be necessary for this?
Yeah, and we are making modifications to that. I wasn't going to get into the, too deep into the weeds. We will have a portion that will be a two-to-one slope, but mid, mid-slope, we are providing an eight-foot-wide flat plateau. And then going down to the rear of the units, we're going to a three-to-one slope. So we're cutting down the steepness and we're breaking up that slope. So we'll be providing updated information on that as well.
Okay. And just as a point of transparency here, by moving the additional houses down there, I thought it was kind of compact to begin with. And one of the things that I noticed on the prior plan, and you may address it with the new plan, so you can take it into context. The driveways of opposing houses all seem to be right on line with one another, which I don't necessarily think is a very safe way to handle that. So I think there's too many of them, so I don't know if you have any plans that are... are smaller than 66, maybe 40, 35, 45, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood, um, to see what it would look like, um, but I just, it just looks very congested, I know you get the, the ratio because of the open space, I'm not concerned about that, I'm just looking at the amount of density that it's actually, it's, it's packed in there, and the fact that the driveways are directly opposite one another, so I would take that into context when you're, when you're working on your final plans.
Got you.
Okay?
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, is anyone in the audience wish to be heard? Mr. Budenhagen?
Gene Budenhagen, 201 Gulf Street, I'm enthusiastic about the new plan, but I still would like to see, uh, a notation on the drawing, about 100-foot buffer along my property line, with a no-cut tree zone, so, I appreciate if that.
Response, are you okay with that? If you're not planning on doing anything over there anyways, no reason to do any clearing, right?
Yeah.
We can, we can certainly take that into mind when we, when a decision is brought forth.
I don't think the Conservation Commission wants them doing it.
No, we'd, now we'd have to propose another, uh, we'd have to re-propose a cro, a wetland crossing to get over there, and it's, we'd be heading in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
Well, if it's that simple, then I, I think it'd be very simple just to add that note to the drawing.
That, that doesn't seem to be unreasonable.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Anybody else in the audience wish to be heard? Seeing none, I want to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the One Greenbrier, Brier Road, Over 55 Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit until Thursday, September 1st, at 7:00 PM.
Just wanna make sure of the date, Steve, not that I don't trust you.
I think it is.
Have a second?
The ace is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
September 1st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next, uh, hearing is a continued public hearing for proposed bank and retail building site plan approval and special permit, Cornerstone Bank, Mr. Rotalakis refusing himself, for 195 Main Street, we do have a request for continuance.
Correct, we have a request to continue to the September 1st meeting.
Do you have any questions or comments from the board relative to the continuance request?
No questions.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the, uh, public hearing for proposed bank and retail building site plan approval and special permit for 195 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
September 1st, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And our next meeting is a continued public hearing for a proposed collision center site plan approval, Mag RE Holdings, 800 Boston Turnpike, it's for a location of 420 Boston Turnpike, uh, this is actually a request to withdraw, Mr. Cahill, if you'd like to explain a little bit of what?
Yeah, sure, so, um, the board's been waiting on some revisions from the applicant for a few months, as I think all of you know, um, it was determined, actually mutually between, um, planning department and the, um, applicant, that the new changes, as you'll see, are substantial enough that they actually warranted a new application and couldn't be made under this legal notice with modifications, so, the applicant is withdrawing this application, and as you can see, in her new business, also requesting those technical review fees be returned, for accounting reasons, we can't keep them for another, officially a new application, um, and they're gonna be coming back September 1st, um, it's probably gonna also trigger a new hearing with the Zoning Board of Appeals, there were a couple of variances there in a special permit, and potentially some licensing changes with the selectmen, um, so, we're kind of working that out right now, we've only just received these materials earlier in the week, so, um, but they are, right now, they have a legal notice, they will be on your agenda for September 1st, brand-new, uh, with modified, you'll see the provisions, obviously, the change in plans.
Okay.
So, that's my long explanation.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board relative to the withdrawal, withdrawal request?
Can their application fee be returned?
Unfortunately not.
Yeah, okay.
But they're aware of them.
Okay, okay, no questions, Mr.
But the technical review fees can.
Technical review fee, there was only a little bit ever used.
Okay, okay, so you were talking of.
We actually ended by, I believe, stopping Graves' review at some point at the request of the applicant, so it's only been, uh, at the most, a thousand or 1,200 used, I think.
Okay.
So, they'll get most of it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
No questions.
Um, this, I'll entertain a motion to.
Accept the withdrawal.
Accept the withdrawal.
I move that we, uh, grant the applicant's request to withdraw their application for site plan approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that does it for our open meetings, our next item of business is to discuss and vote on a lot release for Silver Gate Farm Subdivision Lot 4, also known as Two Silver Lake, Silver Gate Circle. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? This is a, uh, it's just a lot, lot release.
It's a lot release, so this subdivision was actually approved and completed back in the early aughts, '03, '05, at some point in the process, it got overlooked that, um, this lot was not released, the, the road's been accepted publicly by the town, the town meeting back in 2005, so all the work was done a long time ago, it's a technicality needed for, um, they're actually transactional sale right now, so they needed, the attorneys won it on the books.
Never, it was never released in the covenant?
Nope, even though the road was accepted and the houses are all built and everything, so.
Interesting.
Someone's administrative oversight 18 years ago, whatever, so, yep, kind of a technicality.
Questions or comments from the board?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
I'll entertain a motion.
I, I move that we, uh, grant the, uh, release from the covenant for Lot 4 of the Silver Gate Farm Subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, the next item of business we kind of touched on a little bit, it's to discuss and vote on the release of remaining technical review fee for 420 Boston Turnpike, so as you mentioned, Mr. Cahill, it's, uh.
Directly related to withdrawal of the last.
And there's no concerns on the planning departments for, for going forward with that return?
Nope, it, we can't use it now because it's been withdrawn, so.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
In light of the withdrawal of the application by the applicant, I, I move that we release the balance of the technical review fees that we are holding.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that does it for all of our agenda items, I'll take a mo, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. We are.